Good evening and welcome to the June 7th City Commission Legislative Meeting. Would you join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is Proclamations, and we have a proclamation for Juneteenth, which is a period of time, a week, from June 13th to June 20th. And Sonia Baker, Chair of the Manhattan Juneteenth Committee, is present to receive that proclamation. And then we'll have a National Dump the Pump, is the name of it. Ann Smith, Executive Director, Terry Deckett, a veteran driver, Daphne McNelly, Executive Administrator of the Flint Hills Area Transportation Agency are here. So if you all will join me at this microphone here on the floor, we all... The first proclamation is for Juneteenth. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory paving the way for passing the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. Whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in South and Southwestern United States. Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called "Juneteenth", combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. This is the second year that Juneteenth will be celebrated as a federal holiday. It seems longer. And this year's Juneteenth celebration in Manhattan begins on June 13th and concludes on June 18th at Manhattan City Park. This year marks the 32nd year that Juneteenth has been celebrated in Manhattan. This year's theme is Freedom, Strength, Resilience. And after two years of unprecedented challenges in our nation, state, and city, this is an opportunity to come together as a community regardless of age, color, disability, ethnicity, familial status, gender, national origin, race, religious belief, gender identity, or sexual orientation, to learn about the importance of this historic day. This year's celebration is in memory of Reverend James Spencer and in honor of Herbert Ely, Lynetta Hill, and everyone over the past 32 years who have worked diligently and enthusiastically to ensure that Juneteenth is celebrated in this community. Therefore, I, Linda Morris, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby declare the week of June 13 to 20 as "Juneteenth" and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city and to celebrate with the spirit of freedom, strength, and resilience. So Sonia Baker, would you like to say some words? Please.
We're very excited for 32 years in Manhattan, Kansas, and there's very few communities that can say that they've had this type of celebration for so long. We continue to grow and bring, we'll notice, to Manhattan, Kansas, as we want to continue to make it on the map. But it's very important that everyone attends at least some portion of our week long. This time, the Art Walk started Sunday. And if you've driven down points, you'll see flags that we, Manhattan Juneteenth flags. So we just want the community to embrace what we've got going here for Juneteenth and want to thank all the sponsors, the donors, and most importantly, the volunteers that's helped make this Juneteenth a success.
Thank you, Sonia. Thank you very much. I didn't know Mr. Ely, but I knew Jim Spencer, Reverend Spencer, and Lynetta Hill. And I know how hard they worked in this community, and it's a tribute to them. So thank you for recognizing them too on their passing. Yeah, and we could add Earl Schweitzer, probably. It's too late for the proclamation.
But he will be recognized throughout this week.
That's good, okay. Okay. I have another proclamation for Juneteenth that's set to go with Sonia?
I think so.
Oh, Sonia, Sonia, you have...
Two copies, is that right? Or my, one of them I'll have to read at Juneteenth.
I'll bring it with us. We'll see you on Saturday. Thank you. And the next proclamation is National Dump the Pump Day, if you'd like to join me. Whereas June 17th marks the 17th anniversary of National Dump the Pump as a day that encourages people to ride public transportation as public transit offers economic opportunity, powers commercial, community growth, and offers an affordable and environmentally friendly option for transportation. Whereas every $1 invested in public transportation generates approximately $5 in economic returns. And whereas a household can save nearly $10,000 by taking public transportation and be 10 times safer per mile than traveling by automobile. Communities that invest in public transit reduce the nation's carbon emissions by 63 million metric tons annually, helping to improve the environment and quality of life. As Mayor, I hereby proclaim November 17th as National Dump the Pump Day in the City of Manhattan and that the Flint Hills Area Transportation Agency will join with public transportation agencies across the country and participate in this event to encourage people to ride public transportation. And so... Who's gonna do?
Thank you.
Please, you're welcome to...
Thank you, Mayor, very much.
Thank you.
With gas prices creeping higher and higher, almost $5 a gallon now, we on June, or I almost said June 17th.
Yeah.
On June 17th, we are encouraging everybody to try the bus. It will be a fare-free day, so all services will be free on that day. So please give us a try. Download the app on your Apple or your Google Store. And we are looking forward to providing more and more service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. And we do that once a month. There was no one that signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comments? Seeing no one, that's not, that doesn't, wouldn't normally be here, I'll move on, to Commissioner Comments. Yusha, would you like to kick it off?
Sure, not too much, except I'm on the board with the Flint Hills Area Transportation. And Dump the Pump is something we did talk about, so hopefully everybody takes advantage of it or at least sees what it's all about. You know, there's more and more need for public transportation, not only with Kansas State University, but within the community where a lot of folks use it just to get to work and back or to go to their physician. But there's just more needs, and I would like each of us to try to give it a try and see what it feels like at times, so we can speak to it a little bit better and understand the needs in our community. So I really appreciate you doing the proclamation, as well as for Ann promoting it as well. Thank you.
Yusha is remote this evening. She's in Houston at a Rotary International Conference, so, all right. Commissioners, any Commissioner comments? Nope, okay. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And our agenda has been distributed, so the folks at home can follow along. Are there any Commissioner comments about Consent Agenda items?
Yes, I'd like to move Item D2 to the General Agenda.
Okay, are there any other comments?
I've got, I want to make like four.
Okay.
And, you know, first one is Section E, you know, Resolutions, because when you just look at this agenda, it doesn't really give you the meat of it. And both of these are excellent resolutions because it helps the city financially. And, you know, by selling that lot, you know, 33 and Lee Mill, that takes a burden off. We've got a few more to go, but we've been, you know, unraveling from that mess over the past couple of years, and that's a great step forward. And also, you know, the bidding and the sale of the property on South Juliet because the funds there, because the high bid was $1,510,000. And that, of course, is going to go against the joint maintenance facility, which will lower the debt that will incur on that. So those are real positive moves, and I'm happy to see that. And then Item F, there's Professional Services. The Tributary and Stream Detention Plan, it's not clear here, you know, by reading the material, that's going to include all the streams in the city. Am I correct on that? So, you know, Wildcat Creek, Little Kitten Creek, the little area over there by Seaco Park that people are having problems with. And the idea behind this is to try to get a big picture handle on all this erosion that right now is being handled by homeowners, associations, and people like that. And I think Mayor Morris is going to serve on the committee. That was one of the things that would be included here, which is good because I didn't volunteer, because this will probably affect where I'm at because I'm on Little Kitten Creek. And so I didn't want to, I would have liked to have taken part in that, but it will, this will be interesting, how this comes out. It's going to be very important to a lot of people here in town. And then the other Professional Services, you know, originally this ADA study was way over 600,000, and now it's down to 300,000, which is a plus. I still don't like the price of it, but I got some information back from the staff. I think I understand the reason why we need to do it. You know, federal government mandates that aren't paid for are sometimes a problem. But my expectation is that, you know, we won't be rehiring this consultant in the next three years, that they will provide a study, and then the folks on the staff will end up keeping it updated and maintain it, you know, henceforth, without us having to hire more people or hire more consultants. Is that the correct evaluation?
Yeah, as we discussed during the work session, we're not doing a full-blown self-evaluation of all city facilities, right-of-ways programs. We're doing the high-traffic areas, areas that weren't identified or evaluated in the 1992 plan. And we're setting that transition plan up so that we can continue to keep it a living document and updated over time. There will still be areas that we haven't evaluated, but we'll need to identify as staff. If we can do those in-house, figure out other funding sources. We've looked at CDBG Admin as an area that you could identify as a source that isn't general fund, which is what we're using today for this evaluation.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't want to see us sink any more general fund money in there. I get it, if we can, you know, use some other funds. And then the last thing on the Board Appointments, I see Rich is here, or he was. Yep, there he is, Rich Jankovic is here. And I appreciate, you know, the Airport Board's work, you know, over the past few years because of reappointing, you know, Rich Jankovic and Karen Rogers. I think I spoke with her on the phone the other day. And that Board's been doing great work, especially on the parking. And you've got some challenges ahead with the runway closing. So good job the past few years on that. And that's all, thanks.
And I ask to serve on the Tributary Stream and Detention Maintenance Policy Study, just because I'm interested in all things flood and those tributaries roll down to the low parts of our community. I would make a comment, too, that the new development out on Wildcat Creek West, the county usually doesn't contribute a lot to Wildcat, but this certainly, that project out there with an amphitheater for 3,000 and parking will affect us at some point in time. So I hope they're watching stormwater drainage, too. And I'm glad to see the ADA project back on the agenda. We have a history here of ignoring ADA years ago, and I'm glad to see it, that we're dealing with it and not just ignoring it. Okay, is there, let's see, is there any public comment on the Consent Agenda? No one new has entered the room, so I'll close public comments on the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda, except for Item D2, which is getting moved to the General Agenda.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. To approve the Consent Agenda and move Item D2 to the General Agenda, all those in... Well, City Clerk Brenda Wolf, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, the next item on the Agenda, this is moving really fast, is the General Agenda. And we have a, Item A is a Discussion Regarding Changes to the Governing Body Meeting Procedures. And the presenter is Katie Jackson, City Attorney.
Mayor, it may be a good idea to discuss the Consent Agenda item first, even though we usually put it at the end of the agenda, because that ordinance directly influences the first item on the agenda. If that's acceptable to the mayor, that may be helpful.
It's okay to the mayor. Can the mayor decide that?
Yes.
Okay. The mayor decides that we should consider that first. And we'll, so John, you hit your item, if you want to lead the discussion.
Sure. Actually, it's just one thing on there. It's Section 214, that's the quorum that we have down as four. When we did that, I was giving it thought then, but I didn't say anything. And then I thought about it some more. I actually mentioned it on the radio today when we were doing the show. And I would just like to propose that we take that to three. My reasoning is, well, my original reasoning was just make sure there isn't any gamesmanship. And I heard years ago, even before I was on the commission the first time, there was talk of a couple of commissioners not coming, so there wouldn't be a quorum, and so there wouldn't be a vote. But actually, I'm just thinking it would be the prudent thing to do, to have three in case there was a disaster and a couple of us got taken out, that we could still operate the commission, that go to the least number possible. The other thing is, the way I understand it, and Katie will correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we go down to three to pass an ordinance, we would need a unanimous decision, because we would need three votes in order to pass it. Now, there are other things, and I know an email was sent out about contracts and things of that nature that could be passed two to one still in that situation. But the main thing, ordinances, couldn't be changed. So again, that's my reasoning. I just think it'd be more prudent to go with three than it would with four.
Yeah, I agree. Well, John?
So I think, I understand the reasoning, but I think, you know, I'm remote right now. So I think in the days now where we can participate remotely, I think there's more possibilities to have four people than in the past when we couldn't do this. I think when, if anybody can call a special meeting at any time, knowing that, you know, maybe two are out, decisions will be made. And I'm not sure that's good governance. I think it's still very important to have four, especially now that we have more flexibility in how we can be part of the meeting, even if you're out of town or if you have an emergency. Even if Mayor Morris was with her son right now, she could have participated. So I think, I would like to leave it at four. I think it's very important to have a supermajority as opposed to just a quorum, for a three being just a quorum. I think it's important to have four as the quorum.
I have a question that Katie probably could answer, and that is, how long have we been at four and why did we move to four? And I know there's information, but there's a story there, too, probably.
Yes, in 1998, the city adopted a charter ordinance to charter out of a law that existed then, has since been repealed, that set the quorum at three unless you chartered out of it, which we did. And our charter ordinance, which is in the process of being repealed by this group, says that the quorum is four unless you adopt an ordinary ordinance that makes it three. The main reason for that charter ordinance in 98 was because at the time, the Open Meetings Act said that a majority of a quorum could not speak about the business of the body or it was unless they followed the open meetings, which meant for this group of five, that two commissioners could not speak to each other about city business without, except at a public meeting. At that time, a few cities, when that Open Meetings Act read as that, they made changes. Junction and, Junction City and Lawrence are two examples that were in the 1998 memo. That open meetings law changed in the year 2008. And now it says that a majority of the body can't speak together, so that's three of this group. We're not at two anymore, we're at three. I checked Junction City and Lawrence today. Both cities have made changes to their procedural ordinances since some changes the state law made in 2015. These are the things we're doing now. So they've all kind of reviewed this issue, and Junction stayed at four, and Lawrence changed to three. So as far as I can tell, the main reason, at least in the city's records, to reflect the quorum of four was the Open Meetings Act, the prior version, pardon me, of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Well, I, I like the idea that you still got to have three votes to pass important stuff. And I'm not sure if I wouldn't just rather have, if there's only three people there, then they all have to agree. Everything has to be, get all three votes. I don't like the idea of, and I can't imagine what's so damn important that you have to vote with just three people and it's a two-to-one vote. I don't want the commission deciding stuff with two votes, two yay votes. So if we could do the three-person quorum, you got to have all three votes if there's just three of you there. I'd support that idea. What's, how is, is that possible or how does that work?
If unanimous?
It's got to be unanimous. If there's only three people voting, if there's only three people at the meeting, or, yeah, sort of in the meeting, it has to be unanimous. Because I just don't want to get to the point where, yeah, you only, two people are voting on things for the commission or deciding things for the whole commission. I just don't know a scenario where...
I think the thing, and Katie will come in, that, I mean, it's three to do an ordinance, but it's not three if it's like some contracts had to be paid. And I think it's that disaster recovery thing. I think staff would like you to be able to go two-to-one if it meant to pay bills or something. But again, Katie will explain, but three for an ordinance, which is kind of a law, would have to be.
Commissioner Hassel, that, oh, pardon me, was somebody...
That's all right. City Manager Ron Fear, you know, one of the, I guess I wouldn't recommend that you bind yourself, that you have to always have three votes. I think there would be times that, you know, certainly you need to do that for ordinances. There have been times over the years where there's been conflicts of interest that folks have chose not to participate because of that. And so that could limit you to, down to three. It was interesting, as I was reviewing some of the work session discussion items, Salina actually has a table of what they, and they've set it based on the number of eligible participants. And they go even down to just one being able to approve something in certain circumstances. But rare occasion, and I think that's probably gone a little too far, but I do think there are times when things happen and you don't have that availability. And I agree technology with Commissioner Ready, that certainly technology allows a lot more flexibility than it used to from that circumstance. So, but I, to bind yourself that you always have to have three affirmative votes to conduct business or approve the bills or word a contract or whatever the case may be, might be a little bit too limiting, I think.
Isn't that what we do when we have a quorum of four? We have to have three to pass anything?
No, and that's the additional point to make, Mayor. Right now, if you had four attend a meeting, and you have your quorum, and one recuses themselves, a matter can be adopted two-one right now, under our current quorum. So quorum is the minimum number to conduct business. It doesn't always count into the vote outcome, only in certain circumstances, by ordinance law or resolution. So I just, so if we were to go to the three-o now, I just know it would be stricter than what we're currently operating under.
I don't want that, but, yeah, I know back when I was on the commission before, it was Ed Kleemack and I were both, were voting on bringing, getting a water line out to St. Luke's property out there. I was the president of the church at the time, Ed was just a member. But we needed, Ed had to, I recused myself. He couldn't or didn't because he needed to have the fourth vote there. But since all that's changed, I guess we could go with three. And, yeah, as long as it's three for the important things, that nobody can sneak something by, that's fine, I suppose.
I would hope that there's nothing like the mischief that you cited originally. That is pretty underhanded. And I'm, you know, there are places around the country where we hear of things like that, even legislative kinds of onriness. But I would hope that we are more honorable than that, than trying to do something while everybody's away is... So what are we thinking here? As your three, all three of you are saying three. Yusha, you wanted four.
I think it should be four. I think for, yeah, I think for all the reasons that even Ron and Katie were stating, I think the way it is right now has worked best. And I can't, there's no, even if there's just three people, regardless of which three, we'd never know which one will have the conflict of interest, even in the voting process. Then you're having a meeting for, you may even have to cancel a meeting if somebody can't come because they can't participate. So I don't know, I think it just opens up a lot more challenges than reduces challenges.
So it's been a long time since we had three? And we've been using four for how long?
Since 1998.
Again, I just interject that disaster recovery thing. If we have a tornado and we lose two commissioners, that's one of the prudent things I think there is, is you can still do business. And I don't think it hurts us to go to three, because if we have four, we have four. We've got it. We'd never go to three unless we literally had the situation where there was two people not here. So it's not, I mean, that would be the only reason we'd end up going to three.
Isn't it, isn't it possible, like during COVID, we did hybrid, I mean, we went remote? So there's just so many ways we can do this now.
Right, so we'd never go to three.
I was struck by my need to be out of town because my son has been ill. And, but ordinarily, I think because we have a quorum of four, I find it very difficult to be gone and know that I won't be, what? Not fulfilling my duty as an elected person. So if you've noticed, I'm here almost every time. And, but it limits my ability to see my grandkids and go on vacation for two weeks. It's just, it's like you all who have to sit here on Tuesday nights. I apologize. Thank you for doing it. I think, Yusha, I can cooperate with the three. I like the four. I think it builds in some safeguards. And I'm not interested in skullduggery or onriness either. But I would, I think that we should be able to get along with the three.
And we still got to answer to the public. If there's funny business going on, I'm sure the Mercury will figure it out and report on it and scold us to death about it. So we should be fine with three.
Yeah, and maybe I need to clarify, too. The funny business is if the quorum was four and two commissioners got together and decided... and two commissioners got together and decided not to show up, so you wouldn't be able to have a vote because you didn't have a quorum. That's the funny business I was talking about, which happens when you have a quorum of four.
It could happen with three, too. I'm just, it doesn't, it's not limited to four.
True, if you only had four who could show up, one could not show up.
It can happen anytime, and fortunately, it does not happen. And so that's to the credit of our consistency here, that we have respectful people. Okay, um, is there anything else?
I have a question. If we want to do that, can we make a motion to pass this with the change of making it four to three?
Yes, Commissioner, you can make a motion to approve the ordinance with an amendment to section two dash fourteen to read that three commissioners constitute a quorum of the governing body, and then you're able to adopt it tonight if you wish.
Okay, I'll make a-
I'm off now. Making motion that we-
We should have, wait, you know, we should have public comment. Yeah, you had, I was gonna do that and then you started talking, so excuse me. And there's no member of the public here, but in case, well, we have a reporter here. In case there's a city employee that wants to make a comment, I doubt that. So I'll close public comment. John, your motion.
Okay, make a motion that we pass item two D, approve ordinance number seven-five-seven-seven with the amendment to section two fourteen to change the quorum from four commissioners to three commissioners.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I think Yusha has, oh, there she is, okay. We have a motion and a second. Brenda Wolf, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasold?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
No.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
And I hope I never live to regret it. Okay, the warnings are up, so the next item on the agenda, well, the A, discussion regarding changes to the governing body meeting procedures, and Katie Jackson, the city attorney, will lead us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have a few brief slides, and then I'll probably go back to my seat so I can take better notes, respond to questions. This schedule slide, you've seen before. We've been undertaking an effort to update our ordinances and policies since December. Tonight, we adopted second reading of the ordinary ordinances to amend chapter two, which included the things we had to have done by June 30th, when we expect the charter ordinances to be effective. Tonight, the first item that we're talking about, this now is changes to the governing body policy manual resolution. And then the second item, which we're going to handle separately, is on the advisory board policy manual resolution. So we've talked about the goals, the efforts here, what we're trying to accomplish with this effort. And then I have also reviewed with this, with the governing body before, the main changes. You have been provided in your packet a draft policy manual resolution. The way this would work, we currently have a policy manual resolution that relates to the governing body's procedures. It's that, it's that number up there, oh-five-oh-one-eighteen-B. If we are to, we need to update that because it has things in there that are going to be incorrect once the ordinance is going to affect June 30th, such as when our meetings are. We will do, we would update that by repealing the prior resolution and replacing it with a new one that's currently scheduled to be adopted on June 21st, so to be effective June 30th, so that everything could go in, into effect together. If I go back a couple slides, these are, the priority was to accomplish these things by June 30th because that's when the charter ordinances are scheduled to be effective and to make sure all of our ordinances are consistent. I have a few of the key recommended changes. We've talked about these at prior meetings. And we could go through the actual draft if we want. It is annotated with comparisons to the prior version and some comments for you and take any feedback. If we're able to get that feedback tonight, again, the goal would be to bring the draft back on June 21st for the commission to adopt for effective date, June 30th. So that's all I have for the presentation. We can kind of go through how the, what serves the commission best, whether that's going page by page or just taking general feedback.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have questions?
How about you go quickly, page to page?
Okay, sounds like page to page, so.
Quickly.
Quickly, okay. Well, we can, we can make it quick by saying, we have page one contains comments. Would you prefer just to give me your feedback on page one, or would you like me to summarize it?
Page one's fine.
We'll summarize it because I don't read that fast.
Okay. Are we okay to go to page two then?
I'm good.
Yes, okay.
Why don't you put it on the screen?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I can't see that anyway when I'm at the podium, so I have to have it printed.
So 11 o'clock is the new quitting time, for sure, is that?
So the proposal in this, we're, I guess this is a good time to remind why we're getting the draft up. But, so in the new ordinance, the meetings for work session and regular meetings will start at six o'clock, so we won't start at seven. So we have moved the meeting, in the prior, in the version we have in effect now, meetings start at seven and by midnight, or in by 10, we moved those back because we're starting at a different time. Remember, regardless of the time limits, at any time the governing body, a majority can extend it in 30-minute increments if needed. But this would allow for regular meetings to be six to a maximum of 11 unless extended, and then the work sessions, six to nine. The difference in those times are because of the differences in the meetings. The work session doesn't have all the same agenda items.
So Katie, this is Yusha, Commissioner Reddy. When we say 11, also when I looked at the layout of the agenda, we have Ron speaking at the end like he would for a briefing session, giving updates. Does that fall into that 11 o'clock?
Commissioner, and that's, so the next page talks about the agenda. The agenda is not set by this policy. What it says is that, in the policies, that these are the items that may be on the agenda. That allows the flexibility for items to be added, and then the manager can, it says the manager can reorganize them. That being said, you've had a very similar policy in place since 2018, and we follow this order and these components almost always. So to answer your question, yes, that would be included in the time limit. It would be, because all of those items would be part of a regular meeting agenda. And as far as where it's at, that could be rearranged.
So I'm thinking, all of our meetings are now going to start at six. So if our legislative session is also, we're taking out the briefing session, it's part of the legislative session now. So if it starts at six, typically we have six to seven, our briefing session. But we moved Ron's update to the end. So normally, if we had briefing session, it would have been like 5:30 to seven, and then seven to 11 or seven to 12 was our legislative session. But we've reduced our briefing session into legislative session, making it one. So now we even have less time, not only for the legislative session, but even for the update. Does that make sense?
So that was the, some of the thought process there was that, you know, we really aren't going to have a delineation between the two, and some of this, I think, will just take some trial and error. So the thought was, you know, sometimes my report, you know, may take 15 minutes, sometimes it may take two minutes, sometimes it may take 25 minutes. You know, it's kind of one of those things that I tend, have had a tendency to go into probably a little bit more background than maybe is necessary on some of the planning chart items. But I thought it might be, one of the things that I think will be confusing, at least initially for folks, is if we were, again, if we get done with some of the things we had traditionally, if we had them after the call of order at six o'clock and we were ready to start the meeting by 6:30, you know, people just kind of need to have, be in this framework that we're going to start at six and with our normal process. So if they're showing up for a proclamation, if they're showing up for public comments, it's better to be there at the front of the meeting. That's why I kind of moved some of those update items to the back. I looked at several, several other cities and their lineups where they've had their city manager give updates and talked about some of the future agenda items, and they tended to be more towards the end so that the public didn't have to kind of guess as to when they needed to show up.
Right. No, I don't mind it being at the end. I'm just saying, we went from seven to 12 to six to 11, including your update. If, I-
And that time, you know, obviously, as Katie said, that was something that we wanted some feedback on. If you wanted to, just kind of felt like that was a, kind of a normal sequence of starting places to go with the time. Actually, at one point, we had it less than that, and we gained some time back. But if you all want to go with something different, again, this would be the normal time. And as Katie indicated, the commission can agree to extend that time if need be. So, you know, if it's, if you want to, in the resolution, define it as a broader timeframe, that's certainly, that's certainly fine also.
Our current ending time is what for legislative meetings? 11:30?
Midnight.
Midnight?
Midnight.
And our current ending time for work sessions is 10:30? 10:30? What, how many times in the last year, or maybe two years, have we pushed the end day? I think we had a recent meeting and it was close to 10:30, but for the most part, we've not had such late meetings. We have had in the past, however, when there's a large public presence and they all want to talk, we have had. But I don't want to do anything that limits the public's ability to speak to issues. So this is, we are there.
Yeah, I think the thing is too, though, we're eliminating the dinner. So we usually get here at 5:30, and then that, we're not very, we're not productive for that first part. And then I think we look at tonight, we had a half hour we needed to kill in between the timeframe. And I think Katie, you know, brought up, we can always extend the time if we need the time, so we have plenty of flexibility.
Or we just make a motion to extend the time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think lots of times, we know if we're going to have that long meeting. I mean, if we're going to talk about dangerous dogs, you might as well just schedule it to be a long time.
And I think five-hour meeting, I mean, that's enough to wear anybody out. I mean, that, to me, is just excessive. And then part of it is, we maybe, as commissioners, need to do a better job of time management because, you know, I know at some of the work sessions, you know, we, we're going over stuff that maybe it'd be nice if somebody just put it in the mail folder. You know, and then that'll save staff time and our time, and so I think we'll get, this will force us to be better at time management.
As long as we aren't over-managing the public's ability to speak to the commission and be heard, so.
So that, moving on, the default setting is going to be at work sessions unless we all decide, public comment work sessions are going to be public comment free.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner. And the current policy is the reverse. The reason I changed it is I've been watching the last few work sessions, and sometimes we, just because of the nature of the item and there's no one in the room, we're not asking for public comment. But the nature of a work session is to facilitate commission discussion. You can always allow the public to comment by a majority vote, so we're not precluding that. But just the default is that the public would not be commenting at a work session unless the majority agrees to it on a particular item.
I don't want to do that. I want the public to feel that they can come and comment on topics at our meetings and not keep them out just by policy. I think that's bad policy for a public body.
So coming back to the 11 o'clock one, sometimes we've gone more than 11 o'clock because we've had three or four agenda items, which really needed a lot of discussion. It wasn't that we were just having a lengthy discussion. We've had three or four items sometimes that we had to have a lot of conversation about because they were, like I said, lengthy agenda items. But if everybody's comfortable with 11 and you want, you know, have a chance to extend it and stuff. But I also don't want to, I value how Ron updates us during our briefing sessions. So I do want to give that some importance when we, if our meetings go longer than usual, or, you know, where, I, that's the only time we're going to get any updates from Ron. It will be that last few minutes during our meetings now, because we've taken it out, briefing session, we've taken it out of the front portion of it. We put it at the end. And so that kind of question, answer, or dialogue, anything won't be happening as much. So that's, that's my concern. So I'm thinking our legislative agenda items will probably finish about maybe 10:30 or 10:45, and we will give Ron 15 minutes or 20 minutes to give us an update. And so we are essentially finishing our discussion by then, unless we want to move it 30 minutes at each time. So that's my thought on that. I hope I was able to message that clearly.
I don't want to rush Ron as Ron's briefings for us. That's the only, you know, time we really have that opportunity. But, so, but I don't think there are that many meetings where I can think, though, that commissioners will want to rush it to leave once the business is done and for the briefing, so.
Something we didn't talk about, that could be up for consideration, is actually having that update on a work session evening. Where our legislative meetings are so full and typically require a lot of debate, a lot of discussion, our work sessions, you know, we just schedule one item, hour, hour and a half, and maybe that could be the Tuesday. You get the updates and you talk about the agenda. I don't know, I'm kind of throwing that out there on the table now, but.
Because we only get them every two weeks now.
I like that idea better.
Anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter what two weeks it is.
Yeah, I like that. I want, I don't want to sacrifice those briefings. I think it's important information that we receive.
I'm fine either way. Yeah, that's not a bad suggestion. I can go with that, too.
Katie, you're taking notes, okay?
Yep.
So we're going to get the city manager's updates. He's our one employee, you know. So we're going to get his updates at work sessions in the future. Right.
That makes sense because those meetings are actually a work session.
It is, exactly. Okay. So what about the ending times? Are we happy with nine and 10, 11, knowing that the commission has the ability to extend? Okay.
Yes.
All right, I can accommodate that.
Okay, I think that that-
But public comments at work sessions has not been resolved.
I would just add the note there as a reminder, we don't accept public comment on every item at a regular meeting. And especially if you're going to do your city manager's update at work sessions, you're not going to want to default to the public commenting and engaging on your city manager update. So that would, again, mean that the work sessions would be reserved for commission discussion and your staff updates. But the commission always has the ability, if there is an item that you're seeking public comment on, to have a motion and allow, a majority would allow that to occur. But we don't want the default to be a comment on every item, especially if we have staff items.
No, I'm talking about, a work session is typically one a night or two a night, two topics. And now we've just added the city manager's briefing, but we, we don't. Anyway.
I think on the briefings, we can add the city manager report at the end of a work session. And that's a, that's not a public comment item, and that can be designated as such. But any other items, typically we've had public comment, and I, I think it's okay to have public comment on that. It seems a bit much for us to take a vote on whether to have public comment or not, if people are there to speak, to say no. It just seems like an added step.
If we have the housing study at a work session, or if we have Wildcat Creek's study at a work session, I would expect the public will want to hear it and comment on it, and we should be- on it, and we should be receptive to that. And we don't normally vote on a work session.
Yeah, and I think if there's a bunch of people here, yeah, I would have no problem.
Having public comment?
Having comments. I would, I would cast a vote to allow it at the time, but, yeah, I think we could, I'm okay with it like this.
As long as you're agreeable.
I am, too, because, again, it's, it's time management, but I can see, you know, exceptions, like we're discussing something and there's a, you know, like, say, we're discussing something with our C P D and the directors here, I'm sure as part of the work session, we can say, we'd like to hear from the director, you know, and you can have those individuals that are going to provide quality input to do it.
Right.
And it's, again, a time management thing, and it's still public, and it wouldn't be voted on, so people got plenty of time to talk two weeks later when it is voted on or three weeks later. So, I'm good with it as written.
As long as you're not cutting me off from inviting the public to comment. Okay. All right.
Okay, I think page two includes some, some new subsections under section two, the general rules for governing body meetings. We've talked, I'm just going to highlight these and then let you all give your feedback. The second one, we've, we discussed the work session meetings, that's item three, we've already discussed that. And then I think we've really resolved four in terms of the city manager update. So, I guess if there's any comments on section two, that would be the item we have not discussed.
Okay. I've got a couple of points on this page. For item two, it's your 2C, write to the floor, any commissioner wishing to speak shall first be recognized by the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall yield the floor in order that the requests to speak were made by calling on the commissioner, which isn't how we do it today. And I know we do it in a much more informal way today, and commissioners kind of weigh in at different times during the course of the meeting. And I realize why this is in there, but I actually think it'll slow us down, won't speed us up. And I think most of the time, the way that we do it works out well. We've done it some here tonight, and I think you saw people defer and let people talk and walk through it. There are times when things get heated and there's more back and forth, but then I think this could become more difficult because, yeah, the presiding officer trying to, well, who was first, who was second? Someone may want to talk. Lots of times, people interjected a point to talk about something another commissioner said right at that point in time. I know I'm more aggressive when I want to talk if I'm trying to respond to another commissioner, and I might defer if I can think, okay, I know he wants to respond to that, or she wants to, I'll hold off because mine's kind of an independent point. So, I realize that gives more structure, but I actually think that's going to slow us down more than that's going to speed us up.
Yeah, I tend to, I tend to agree. If we had a larger body, I'd get it. If we had nine or 10, you know, you'd have to do that because you'd have everybody talking over each other. But, you know, I've been here for a few years, and it seems to work. I mean, occasionally, we have some heated discussions, but even then, I think everybody does get a chance to talk.
Eventually.
Eventually, yes.
I, I, yeah, I agree. I think 2C is unnecessary. I think the flow of dialogue is better the way we've been doing it. It may, I know other commissions and other city councils don't do it that way, and they're just much more formal about it, but I really don't see it, see that as a need that we need to put into our documents at this point. I think what we have does work well for our city commission.
So, nix that one.
Okay. Any other comments on page two?
One more.
Well, I've got something on four.
Page four or number four?
Number four.
Sure, okay.
Number four, which actually, I'm fine with everything that's in there. You get, it says based upon input from the mayor, majority of the governing body, and/or the city staff. I just want to interject, a majority of the governing body is the only entity that can dictate an item must or must not appear on the agenda, which I know we kind of informally do things that way, which is if the majority wants it, they get it on the agenda, or if the majority doesn't want it, it doesn't. But since we're kind of proceduralizing everything and saying, well, that isn't, is how it's written or not written, and my language may not be perfect, but to get the point across that I'm trying to get across there is what I'm after.
What is it you suggested, recommended language?
To add in, a majority of the governing body is the only entity that can dictate an item must or must not appear on the agenda.
I, I don't know. I mean, there are times city staff bring stuff to us all the time that we are not aware of, that.
Oh, well, the majority would have to, would have to dictate specifically, we want this or we don't want that. So, it can't, it's not that you have to go with it for every single thing. It's that if the majority says, I want it, it has to go on. If the majority says, I don't want to talk about that, then it doesn't go on.
When do you see that happening?
It's happened before. It just hasn't been formally written.
I'm asking, when would that happen? So, this is how it will go most times. But if there's one topic that the majority of the commission wants to put on, then you would expect them to vote on it in order to get it on the agenda?
No, no. We just had it, we just did it recently when we had the board situation, and we wanted to, we had to do those resolutions to do it.
Uh huh.
There was basically just a poll taken that, yes, there was three people who wanted that resolution, so that got put on the agenda.
So, it was put on an agenda, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think there had been some time before, even in the last commission, that had to do with some of the stuff that had to COVID where a majority said, no, we don't want to talk about that anymore, so things weren't put on the agenda. So, again, I think we do that. I'm just.
So.
Yeah, see, my concern, you know, sort of like with John, over the years, you know, agenda items, I know I've talked to Ron and said, I'd like to see on the agenda, and I get, I get the answer, sorry, we don't put things on the agenda because an individual commissioner wants it on there. But the way this is written, if you're the mayor, you can put it on there, and that's not the majority of the commission. So, whoever serves as mayor every other, you know, every other year, three years, whatever, the mayor can put anything they want on the agenda.
So, every agenda has to go out to the full commission for comment before it can be published? Is that what you're saying?
Should, should be.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah. The way this is written, you know, the city manager can put what he wants on there, no problem with that, with staff input. But it does make a distinction here that the mayor has the ability to control the agenda with or without the consent of the majority of the commission.
The old language used to say that the agenda was put together by the city manager and the mayor.
Yes.
This one just says based on input from the mayor. So, I don't have any specific control, is how I read this.
Yeah, that's what John's trying to clarify.
I have input.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it put down, and I think the fact that we're switching also for the briefing session to be on that work session, which would then put it right before the next legislative meeting, really kind of goes with this because we'll see that planning chart, we'll see the items that are on there, and that would be the time for either the majority to say, hey, this isn't on there, I want to make sure that gets on there, or to say, no, we don't want that item, get that off. So, that's really all it, all it is, is formalizing kind of what we do anyway.
So, yeah, it's, so, should that be codified, you think, or just, is the, because that's one of the things, we're sort of trying to codify informal things or trying to informalize coded things. Do we need to do something like that, you think, or is the informal way of doing it?
I think Ron can probably chime in here, too, but there's a lot of times, he's touched base with all five of you as mayors. What are you comfortable with this on the consent or on the general? That's the input. I, I find this sentence really to describe all the types of communication that goes into an agenda, whether it's order, whether the item's on. I mean, and it does say the majority of the governing body is one of the ways in which an item can make it or be taken off. But it does talk about the interaction with the mayor in terms of, because we, as staff, look down the table at Ron and go, can that be on consent? And he's like, well, I need to check with the mayor and see what the mayor says.
But at least with the consent, anybody can move it, so.
Absolutely.
So, we're not so concerned.
And I really do think that's, that's the extent of the conversation with the mayor about the agenda.
So, the city ma, according to this language, the city manager sets the agenda with input from the mayor, the majority of the governing body, and/or the city staff. That's what that sentence says.
And if I may clarify for everyone, this is the existing rule, and in the 2018, this is not different from what is formalized now.
I know.
And the way to read the sentence is the manager has the authority to set the agenda, period. The manager is going to take input from the mayor, a majority, and the staff when he or she sets the agenda. The manager has the authority, which is typical and of city manager cities. So, ultimately, the manager is in control of it. But I also just want to note, this is not a change. This aspect of it is the same as the 2018 resolution. We can make changes to that, but this is, I, I think it's important to, and maybe the sentence, you would appreciate it being written differently, and maybe it reads where the others have the right to set the agenda, but they do not. Only the manager has the right to set the agenda based upon that input.
See, I would, I would clarify, taking out two words, the mayor, input from a majority of the governing body, because the mayor is part of the governing body, so therefore it doesn't prevent the manager from talking. But a lot of people in the city actually think the mayor's setting the agenda because of the way this stuff is written.
Well, you know, they don't.
And you don't, and I didn't do it, and Anusha didn't do it, because, because Ron has always done a pretty good job of managing that. But, but I'm concerned since we're, you know, we get hung up on the wording of things, is to make this crystal clear. So, there is no confusion.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I think what you said is correct, the city manager sets the agenda. My little sentence is really more of a, after he proposes, because we get to see that agenda, the, the majority has the power to say, we don't want this item, or we want you to put this item in.
And I would just offer that, you see a lot of agendas where the first item, first order of action is to approve the agenda. And that's one of the reasons that's on there. You don't see it as much in city manager form cities, but in this case, that's one of those things where if there's a disagreement that an item shouldn't be on, you know, most of the input I've tried to gather over the years from commissioners is, again, you know, either they're acting on behalf of a constituent who wants to see the commission, take something to the commission, and I just, you know, I think it's a good practice for a majority to agree that that particular subject is ripe for discussion, and what is the action being conveyed as opposed to that type of situation. The other one comes about when, if you have an item that is coming before the commission, that you want to make sure that staff has had time to prepare for it. So, one of the things that you see occasionally is, is commissioners, not not here, but other places, vote to add an item to the agenda that night. And there, there hasn't been any notice to the public or each other that that item was going to be added tonight, and potentially for action. So, there's not a, there's not good time for the staff or even individual commissioners to more prepare themselves for discussion of that particular item so that you've got good background. So, that's the, one of the reasons where, you know, we want to try to make sure that we're the best prepared we can be to have a discussion on a particular item when we're bringing those items to you. So, those are just some food for thought in this particular, particular issue. And one of the reasons that, you know, as Commissioner Butler indicated, was really to, when we started bringing the planning chart to you, and also started publishing those future agendas out there for the public so they could kind of see what's, what we're contemplating for future actions, and, and that you're a little bit better prepared for some of those items, and certainly have an opportunity to discuss among yourselves for, you know, I think this is ripe for discussion. And, and manager, I want, I want to see that on the agenda. And I get, you get concurrence from three commissioners. Several of you have reminded me of that several times. So, I think that process works pretty good, but I'm certainly open to what your, what your thoughts are.
Well, I can tell you that I haven't changed an agenda item. I moved one thing from consent to general two months ago, and that is about all I have done in any recent time to the agenda. So, I don't think the mayor is doing a lot of onerous things as you might think, but each of you will get a chance, well, John, but to be mayor and to, you know. So, if the, if the commission wants to have this, what is it? What's the practical way to approach this? Does the city manager send the agenda out to all commissioners, and they send him a reply back saying, yes, I approve this? How does he?
I don't think, I'm not, I'm not.
How does he practically proceed?
I'm not suggesting anything so cumbersome.
Yeah.
This is really just, this is really only going to come about if there's a majority that either has an issue with an item being on or off, and it's not trying to scour everything that's coming. It's not a, it's, it's not meant to be, to set up any huge bureaucracy or anything else. It's just putting down and writing really what we do in practice.
Well, since it's nothing different than what we've been doing.
Right, we really.
I, I think we, we'll just, Ron will get our input at the briefing session, late night thing, and if he shows something on the agenda, and we're all like, no, 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 he's got time to change it. So, I don't, I don't think it needs anything other than just the discussion at the briefing, Ron's briefing thing, so.
I'm fine with the way it is right now. What, Usha?
I said, I'm fine with the way it is written right now. I don't see a need to change it. I think we all have our input in it. I think Ron acts appropriately with changing the agenda. We moved something to the general agenda even tonight. I, I don't see a huge dilemma in the way it is right now.
I think the staff, it has, the staff, the staff has to fully develop an item before they can bring it to this body. So, it can't be spur of the moment. So, okay. I don't know where we are with that.
Thank you. Page three, if we're on. So, this is, starts with the consent agenda items. Obviously, I'll make changes to this policy to add the manager briefing or, or updates. The one thing that I did change under, or sorry, let me start with consent agenda. I think I misspoke there, I meant work session. Consent agenda item B, this is a change, and we don't have to do this, but right now, we're moving, we're generally moving consent agenda items to the end of the meeting. Most cities do it right after the consent agenda, and primarily because if somebody's attending for that item, they don't have to wait till the end of the meeting to discuss it. That really is a policy decision of the governing body. I just wanted to share that that's more typical, but we can still have the process of going to the end of the general agenda, but it is more common to see it right after the consent.
I think I suggested at the work session, we do it then, and the main reason is that. I always felt bad, you know, somebody wanted to talk on it, and then they're stuck here till 11, and they might not stay. And so, to me, it makes sense, just get it over with.
Most consent agenda items are not, won't take a long time. It's, well, they have, but most don't, yeah.
Okay, and then the next several sections you can kind of look at together. This starts with gen, so in general agenda items, which we've talked about, I've removed the language in there. There were some voting and motion language in that section, and I just created a motions procedure, that's section five, and a voting procedure in six. So, a portion of it is the same as the existing policy. I just added some things. I, I moved it to other sections, and then I added some things and noted for you those changes. So, I would suggest just talking about those sections together.
Okay. For these, the only thing I had highlighted, something we went through here recently, was the motion to call the question, or it says here, the previous question. And when I first read through it, you know, it said, any commissioner may call the question on a pending substantive motion. Once all commissioners had an opportunity to speak after the motion, and if the call is seconded, then you move to immediately on the vote. Now, I know I did that at one of our last meetings, the last time I remember was the rental inspection when we did that. And it comes a little cumbersome because did everyone have a chance to speak? There's also nothing in there about if someone just keeps talking on and on and then says they're not done speaking, and, you know, is someone keeping track? they're not done speaking, and, you know, is someone keeping track? You know, I was thinking of putting, recommending putting some times in there, and I thought that's just going to make it a mess. But if you think about the way this is written, if you look about, we first have a presentation, then we have questions regarding the presentation, then we have public comment, then we have staff clarification and commissioner discussion about the item we're talking about, and then we have a motion. So we've already had quite a substantial amount of debate about what the item is. No, we haven't?
Well, Commissioner Morata, that's, I appreciate you saying that, because that is our current policy, which we have not been following exactly, is that we shouldn't be having that debate and discussion until the motion. So the questions regarding the presentation should be limited to just clarifications and questions. So if we were to follow the current, and this is same in the current policy and the one before you, that debate and discussion would not occur. In other words, commissioners wouldn't be expressing their opinion and maybe previewing their vote until the motion. Because, and the theory that they are going to take in the public comment and hear all the clarification and discussion before they debate and, you know.
Well, but you have a down, there's public comment, then staff clarification and commission discussion.
Yes, that's, that's the discussing concerns, options, or questions to formulate a motion. So that, the discussion would be to formulate the motion.
Right, right. All I'm saying is, they did take into account that discussion's happening after the public comment.
Yes, yes, that would be, so that anticipates that maybe, like, like our example today, Commissioner, where you asked a question about if we could adopt the ordinance by amending the quorum tonight, that, that's the type of discussion that would occur then. So the discussion would be, hey, can we amend this motion? Can we do that? And then the motion would occur, and then you have discussion or debate on the motion. That is not, I mean, that is what our policy has said. We have not been confining our remarks that way. It's typical, more typical to do that, but I, and I'm not, I'm not sharing those thoughts to address the call the question matter, because typically calling the question is just a, it doesn't have those qualifiers in it. Even in this, the League's model code, you can just call the question after the motion. You can't call a question until there's a motion table. That's not a possibility. In 2018, when we adopted this, that, this, the governing body, three of whom, Commissioners Butler, Mayor Morris, and Commissioner Usha Reddy were on the body at the time, and this was adopted unanimously in 18, that was an aspect of it that we modified. In other words, we, we put that in there, but it is not typical to have some kind of qualifier like that, where the, everyone's had a chance to comment.
Okay, which is actually literally where I was going to go, or recommend not to have the qualifier, because it becomes cumbersome to figure out whether that qualifier was met or not, and one commissioner's comment could have been 20 seconds, and another could be 20 minutes, and then you're saying they've both had the opportunity to speak. And it, it's just, I find that cumbersome. The, I was trying to remember back in 2011, even necessarily had a motion on the floor when we called the question.
If a question was called before a motion, that was out of order.
I understand that. I was just, when I was thinking back, I'm going, I don't even know if we had one when we did that. So anyway, I guess the.
So we're moving more toward following Robert's Rules of Order, because we've always, when we talk about it, it's, they've said, well, we don't follow Robert's rules technically. So we're moving more toward or more away from?
This is, this policy and are not based on Robert's Rules of Order?
No, but they're, I'm, I understand what you're saying, but I'm talking about the individual provisions seem to be.
Maybe to cut the chase, the, what I would propose as a change is not to have those qualifiers, and take it back to how it's more typically done, is that, you know, once the motion is made, any commissioner can call the question at any time.
I don't really have a problem with that, because it, sometimes it just prevents endless debate, and that's what happened on the rental inspection thing. But that's why the question was called then. I think it's used rarely, but it just prevents, you know, that meeting going until midnight, because, you know, you got a couple people that want to just continually talk and talk and talk, and the vote's going to be decided anyway. So the ability needs to be there. I agree with John.
Yeah, and obviously, you have to have a majority for it to pass, to call the question.
Katie, would that involve basically deleting what I've highlighted, the once all commissioners have had the opportunity to speak after the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just so everybody's clear.
So every commissioner would have the opportunity to speak before?
No.
So you could call the question before commissioners have had a chance to speak?
Theoretically, yes.
After the motion's been made.
After the motion's been made.
The League cautions in its materials that, you know, calling the question should be a rarely used.
Yeah.
Tactic, right? So if the governing body respects that, the motion that way, then it shouldn't be an issue. In other words, it's a rarely used tactic. That's how, but, but the League also does not have any qualifier in it. They allow it to be made with that language deleted. So essentially, you can call it, even if all commissioners haven't had a chance to speak. That is how the League presents it, but they also advise it shouldn't be used very often.
Yeah, we've only, we've only used it twice, once in reality, you know, the second time it got hung up in legalese, but in 10 years, so. So I think John's comment is valid on that particular thing.
So if it's used very often, then commissioners are going to start talking earlier under another section and not waiting for a motion, doing it in this order? Because a commissioner should not be prohibited from speaking to an issue before this body. And I think most of us have spoken until we're through speaking. We're able to say what we want to say, several times, some of us.
I think, I think it, Katie, can you scroll back down? I think it's important to leave that sentence in there. Back up again. I think the discussions we have, I don't find them to be too daunting, or too much, or just repeating ourselves. I think we owe the public a rationale for why we are having the debate we're having, and oftentimes when we are communicating our thought process on a specific issue, then a dialogue happens, and we are also answering other commissioners' questions or responding to their rationale. And I think that type of discussion is what the governing body is supposed to be doing, is having a discussion thoroughly on specific voting matters, voting items, especially if they are critical but also controversial. And when you say, call to question, nobody else can talk, we're going to take a vote now, I find it kind of disrespectful, and two, as though, you know, a commissioner has made up their mind that, you know, nobody else's voices matter at this point, and we're just going to vote. As much as important as votes are, it's also important to have that complete discussion. So that, that's, I see, I feel like if John had this when he was on the city commission last time, and then the next time we had it was this one, then I'm not sure if we're not going to have more of this, because the word majority keeps coming up. We have the majority, we have the majority, we have the majority. So I worry that this might be used even more often by cutting off a complete discussion. The votes are still going to fall the way it is. That, that is part of the governing body's job, but the other part for the public is to know why we are voting the way we are.
I think it, changing it just means you can't beat a dead horse to death, and I've seen that happen a couple times, when it was used. And so I, you know, that's why I'm in favor of what John's saying.
When I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Board, we were each, we were expected to explain our rationale for each of our votes. So I think that it's important that we, as a commission, commissioners state our rationale also for our vote.
Well, I think some of the, the problem we run into is, I think probably everybody ought to have the chance to weigh in on it. It's when we start going back and forth, trying to convince somebody else of something, that at some point it's like, stop, stop, call the question, get this over with. And so, but I, yeah, I'm okay with everybody at least having, having the option to weigh in one time, but just know that if you keep coming back to it, someone's going to call the question, and it's probably going to.
You better cover everything during your time, huh?
That's right. Don't, don't drag it out.
So if I, one thing that this body will have to remember, that if we delete the provision above, where the presiding officer is not calling on people to speak, if the question is called, we're going to have to stop and ensure that every commissioner, I mean, sometimes it'll be obvious, we'll know that everyone's had an opportunity to speak, but if you don't go through that process, which is, this body decided not to do, then when you are in that situation, we might, someone might say, I didn't have a chance to speak, because they didn't, there's no signal, there's no opportunity for that for everyone to understand. That's why those kind, that's why the presiding officer calls on people. And, and I, I know we've resolved that, but, but those things can be tied together. The presiding officer, in some cities, just says a no, and this might be something we could use, they have some kind of indicator that they're looking at, so it's not just raising your hand, there might be a light, or, you know, a flag you put up, so that that way we have some indicator. But my only point is, and I watched the last, the last issue several times, it was pretty tough to determine if everyone had had an opportunity to be, to speak the way that occurred, the way that occurred. And it would be a lot harder if you were doing it live, and you couldn't watch it four times over, like I did. So I just, I want the commission to understand that. You're, you're potentially, I'm not, if you keep that in there, that's fine, but it's easier to ascertain that that condition's been met if you've done some other things.
I had hoped we could just work our way down the table with each commissioner speaking, rather than going to this formal, mother may I, kind of a procedure. But I don't, I mean, I'm willing to do that if that's how we have to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to do the mother may I.
You don't have to do that. You could do what you're saying.
Yeah.
And actually, this commission does that quite a bit. Probably more than half the time, the mayor is calling on people to speak.
Yeah.
And she starts, and so really, you're already following that practice in, in most cases. It doesn't require a mother may I, it can be, the mayor says, does anyone have comments? And then you say yes or no. I mean, that, that could be.
I usually start at the end, or I start with Mark, but I just expect each person to, when they finish, the next person goes on, rather than me calling on each person individually, that's less, more formal.
And I think you, just something to consider, you all consider hundreds of items yearly, and for the most part, you follow this to a T.
Yeah.
You let the public comment, you ask questions, you discuss. As soon as the motion's made, there's usually a second, and you vote. It's really on three, two items, or four, one, where you've got controversy amongst the five of you, and after the motion, you recognize the motion and the second are more than likely going to be yes votes. And then it's this attempt, this attempt to change minds even at that point. It's very interesting, because you do usually follow all of this. It's the controversial, it's the one out of 100 that you're all dealing with, that you're wrestling with a policy right now. I don't think the intent here is to call to question.
Yeah, every single.
Every meeting. I don't think at all. But you do have to take into account, was there enough appropriate discussion at this point in time, after public comment, before the motion? Once the motion's made, clearly two people have tipped their hand, where they're headed with this thing, and now there becomes this debate or this discussion. Putting in that phrase, I, I agree with Katie, you're going to run into a situation where you may have said everything you needed to say before the motion, but if you didn't say anything after the motion, we'll have to stop that and possibly come back to you to make sure you had an opportunity to speak after the motion before the question can be called. It's a little cumbersome.
Yeah, and the intent isn't to make motions and call questions. I mean, it's merely to avoid figuring all this out when we do have the contentious issue.
I will say that one way to view a procedural policy is that all works together. So I, the changes that you've recommended, I don't have any concerns about, but some changes might have other impacts, and I'm just trying to point those out for the commission. And I know the other thing, you know, just on the point of calling the question in some of our past meetings, if people are talking at the same time, while that might feel for the commission like you have an understanding of what's occurring, it may not for staff, we're not going to interrupt that flow. We have a presiding officer and our mayor, so that might dissatisfy some of the commissioners sometimes, because their, their comment's not recommended, but they spoke over someone else, and it's not staff trying to wrangle that. But that, if the commission desires that, and still wants to have that free flow of conversation, I think you're accepting also that some of your comments won't be addressed by staff, because we don't have an opportunity to address them. So that's something I would like the commission to understand, and that's perfectly fine if the commission desires to do that. From a legal perspective, from a practical perspective, that could be the, the outcome of it.
From a practical perspective, I value the staff's comments after the presentation, and, and commissioners have had questions, and I do want the staff to answer the commissioners' questions. So there has to be that kind of give and take, as well as, you know, the public raises good questions too, so anyway.
So are we trying to figure out if we want that statement in there or not? I think it's okay to have that statement in there. That's, that's my feedback as far as this one is concerned.
I do.
I don't know if it'll be used often, I don't know if it'll be not used at all, but I don't see any problem with having it in there. I, I think it just adds more to the discussion, but I, I don't find it too much.
Take it out.
Okay.
And I'm for taking it out.
So all commissioners will not have an opportunity to speak?
I just don't see that happening.
Seriously?
I just don't see that happening, and the only, only time I think it's ever going to kick in is when, after everybody's had a chance to speak, and then two commissioners keep going back and forth, trying to convince the other one, and that happens once every year and a half. And if it happens more often than that, then I would be shocked.
The other significant change is subsection K, which I think is up there right now, the motion to adjourn. We've had this conversation. I know that this governing body has been resistant to a motion to adjourn, because the practice has worked. I will tell you, from the League's, the League's perspective, that is, it's invalid for a presiding officer to adjourn without the consent of the body, primarily because the League says that the adjourn, that you have to have a motion to adjourn, because it signals that the business has been conducted, that the agenda, the agenda has been complete, and the business for the night has been conducted, and that there's also, if you haven't finished your business and you want to continue the meeting under coma, if you, in that motion, state when the meeting's going to be continued to, you don't have to do an additional coma notice. So you can, and we don't do that very often, that's a rare thing. And then I guess, but I added it in there, because that is the recommendation of the League, because their position would be, it has to be in there. I would add that since we've talked about this, at least in the Wichita School District, the, the school board president adjourned, they allowed them to adjourn unilaterally, and did that to stop conversations and changes to the mask policy. And I was at a city attorney's meeting last week, and the, an attorney from the Unified Government said that they didn't have this adopted, and the same thing happened, where their board, their president, their board president didn't want to discuss an item and adjourned the meeting, and all the other governing body looked at the attorney and yelled, what happened? And she said, that's your practice, meeting's over. So if you don't want to have a motion to adjourn, that is this governing body's policy decision, but the realistic consequences are that your presiding officer can adjourn at any time, and there will be no recourse for the body.
I don't see me doing that, but Mark, you're next here.
I will do it every other meeting, probably.
You're next.
Yeah, put, put it in there, probably.
No, I, I think the way this is written is, is good, especially if you get to that 11 o'clock, it'll be witching hour, and you haven't finished the agenda, then at least it'll save staff time, somebody can make a motion to adjourn and reconvene, and whatever time and place, and that might happen on some issue in the future. So I, so I go along with it, I think it's fine.
Okay, and then I think the next section, I think we, I have feedback on that. Then the last section is subsection D, public attendance and participation. I've made changes to this. This is basically what used to be called our public comment policy. Most of my updates to this just pertain to changes in the law and issues that have occurred, but I have noted those changes. But I have noted those changes. So some of it I reorganized. They, we, we haven't had a policy adopted for photography and recording. There's a right to do that in the meetings. We can't prevent that. But even the Attorney General's Office recommends a statement like this. I actually got this language from the Attorney General's Office. And then, so I added that sub, that section one. And then in terms of the other changes, the speakers list is section two. There's no change to that. Three, I have the changes noted, and these are just as reference. These are, I've expanded it, made it clearer that it applies to public attendance, because sometimes people from the audience might get up and start talking, or, or do things from the audience. And participation, that's really just a, that's really was our intent before, but I just made it clearer. And then I've made those changes that I've noted here. So, and I have a change to section four, but we could talk about that separately. Are there any comments on anything one, two, or three with respect to the public aspect?
I agree with Kay. Respectful and civil at all times.
Okay. On four, we had had some confusion over the years. Our current policy from 2018 talks about the type of interaction that a governing body member may have with a member of the public when they're speaking. Part of the reason for the confusion, I think, was that was addressed in the individual meeting sections and not in its separate, it was addressed there, but also in a separate, its own section. So I've actually only addressed it here in section four to eliminate some of that confusion. I wanted, I, this section, so what I would suggest is just to review the, the entire provision. I tried to represent what has been occurring from my observation in terms of how you've interacted with speakers. The one thing I wanna, I want to say is different that we will advise you on separately is public hearings are different. If there's a statutory public hearing, your interaction may be different. So don't, when you're reviewing this section four, you know, don't consider a public hearing. You would have a different opportunity to engage there. Other than that, I would just encourage you to review it for comments.
If a commissioner asks a question, because that says "commission." If a commissioner asks a question, the speaker will be allotted two minutes to answer each.
That's, that's a change, is it not, Katie?
Needs to be commissioned.
Yes, 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 you're right. Yes, I added that because we've had the question arise several times when a commissioner has asked, you know, we have a clock now. And on several occasions, we've had people say, "Well, if you ask a question, how much more time do they get?" And we just didn't have it addressed. So I just added two minutes per question.
Yeah.
And to me, that's, that makes it clear for everyone and still confines that. None, none of us had an answer to that before.
Because the public wouldn't, didn't want the commissioner asking any questions because it would take away from their time, their five minutes. Yeah.
And that's why the other change, Mayor, I appreciate you bringing that up, is that asking the commissioner to hold their question till the end of their presentation. So if the speaker's talking and at three minutes they say, "That's all I have," the commissioner waits to that point to ask a question, doesn't interrupt him. And then, and then if the question is asked, they only have up to two minutes more. They don't get back the two minutes they left on the table. I, I think this will help our, maybe our timekeepers and help the public and the commission so that it doesn't go on. I mean, because right now, if someone asks a question, that speaker could speak for 10 more minutes. We don't have any restraint on them. And we don't want to be in that situation. So, and you're right, Mayor, I will make a change to the word. If, I should have said "if a commissioner." Just a typo. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that. I think on occasion, you know, there, there are commissioners that wanted to ask the speaker a question, and we didn't because we felt like it was inappropriate. So I think this'll, this'll work.
It was uncomfortable not to be able to ask a question.
Katie, do you envision a spe, uh, two minutes per question? Or should the commission ask all their questions of the speaker and they be given two minutes?
That's really up to the body. I, right now I have a, a two minutes to answer each question just because it's a time certain, but it's really up to the commission how they want to handle that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of just different instances in my mind. And very rarely, when somebody goes over five minutes and kind of talks for another 15 seconds, do you all have questions for them? It's usually somebody who comes up and is very succinct and gives you an opinion or something, and then you ask the question. Having said that, I just want to make sure we're over there timing them appropriately. If the mayor has a question, they're given two minutes. And then Commissioner Butler has a question, do they get an additional two minutes?
That's how it's written now, yes. We can change that. It's just more about having.
Yeah, no, I just wanted them to be aware. They, they, that speaker will have another two minutes every question you give them.
I just want to point out too, as the timekeeper over here, that I appreciate the second-to-last question of holding the questions till the end because I'm not able to, uh, update a time in real time while the five minutes is going, like adding two minutes to a five-minute speech or something like that, so.
Okay. Forever known as the timekeeper. Okay. Thanks, Jared, for weighing in on that. That's important.
And then the only other thing I would, the rest of this is essentially the same. The only thing I would notice, or excuse me, draw your attention to is six, six, which is coma compliance. What I added there, just to let you know, is that the coma does not give, the, the public has no right to speak at a meeting at all. That is something that governing bodies give to the public through these types of policies, which is perfectly acceptable and frankly, very common. The one thing I did hear though, was I made it clear that the policy is not creating that right because I have noticed, especially late when no one's in the room or we are not sure, we inadvertently forget to ask for public comment. I don't want someone to suggest that we violated a right we gave them in this policy because we forgot to ask. That's really what this says. Or if the mayor or the majority eliminate or modify public comment, we don't want someone coming back and saying, "You took away a right I had," because they don't have that right under the law. So really, this provision is just saying, "We're not giving you a right. If we, if we have an oversight, that was an oversight." So I just wanted to point that out. That was just more because I know that we have forgotten on occasion and someone got upset later, and this would give us a response to them to say, "Sorry, we, and we use our best efforts, but you don't have a right to speak."
It's like tonight, there's no member of the public present.
Right. But occasionally we, yeah.
Yeah.
But occasionally we've had people, occasionally we've overlooked people in the audience also, though.
The press, the press seldom speaks to us. They just ask questions.
And that's all the comments I have unless the commission has anything else.
On to the next thing.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your feedback on that, and then I'll do a short, the same thing. I have a few slides on this one. And then actually, I'll be turning it over to City Manager Ron Fear, and he'll, and I'll still be taking notes and comparing things, but he'll be leading the practical side of the discussion.
Katie, just one question.
Yeah.
Yes. So do these go into effect after second reading and everything, starting July 1st?
No, what we would do for the policy mail-in your resolution, we'll bring back a revised version at the June 21st commission meeting. And then this governing body has to approve it. And it will be effective June 30th, which will be the same date as the ordinance is in the charter ordinance. So this is, tonight we're getting feedback. You'll have action on it on June 21st.
Okay, at this point.
And then our meetings will start on 6 o'clock.
It would be the first meeting in July, Commissioner, where that, we would shift to the 6:00 PM meetings, correct?
Okay, thank you. I need to state that there, that this was a discussion item and no motion is required. We've been working on future agendas. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding changes to standard procedures for city advisory boards and committees. Ron Fear.
I'll, I'll start off with just a few comments. I'm only here because this is where I can control the PowerPoint. Just a little bit of background, and then the city manager will take over. Just as background, we have about 30 boards that are subject to appointment. In your packet was a list from the city clerk's office. Obviously, some of those boards are more temporary in nature, and some are more permanent. We have different categories of boards. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because some of the laws and resolutions apply differently based upon the type of board. So we have what are called advisory boards to the governing body. And these are basically your creations of city ordinance primarily. So like your social, social services advisory board, your art humanities board, these are things you created. They're not based in state law. They advise you. The other ones are ones that are based in state law. Generally, they're quasi-judicial boards. That's your BZA, your MUAPB, your HRB, et cetera. And then the last one that you appoint to are external boards. So these are not considered advisory to the governing body, but you have appointment authority, and those are the things listed here, library board. And then, of course, the law enforcement, the law board. So I just wanted to, to note those because they result in differences. As I noted, those, because of the type of board, the boards can be different. The appointment authority, so the process to appoint is going to be different based upon whatever law created the board. So most of our boards of the 30 are your creations. They're advisory to you, just in terms of numbers. And those, the appointment authority is set out in city ordinance or resolution, whatever we use to create the board. One board was created by charter ordinance and has the appointment authority in there. That's the Manhattan Housing Authority. That's a really old charter. But we don't have an ordinary ordinance. So to change the appointment authority for the MHA, we have to change the charter ordinance. Some of them are per state law. That's your law board and your library board. State law says how they're appointed. And then the last one is, we do appointments to inter-local boards. And those are set out, those could be set out in the inter-local agreement or an external process. The most recent example is the Food and Farm Council. So that's just some background on the types of boards. That's just, as, as the city manager talks about changes tonight, we might be clarifying what boards are talking about. As a reminder, in 1997, a policy manual resolution was adopted. This only applies to the boards that assist the governing body. So it's not going to apply to your law board because they don't assist the governing body. The law board has had, in the past, it had its own resolution pertaining to appointments. That was adopted in 2006 and then repealed in 2014. But the 1997 policy manual resolution, which is in your packet, doesn't apply to the law board because it only applies to those that assist the governing body. And that, let me go back. That policy manual resolution, it's basically the process that you're familiar with, which is someone has to make an application. The application is reviewed by the mayor, and the mayor brings those appointments for governing body approval. The second part, second and third part of that policy manual resolution is that our board liaisons are appropriately training the board members and orienting them to the board. And then the last part talks about bylaws, that the boards have to bring them to you for changes, and has some attendance rules. Because that, or, because this policy manual resolution was maybe lost among, for a while, we do have some boards that have adopted bylaws that are technically in conflict with it in the sense that they might have adopted a different attendance rule. They're not, that, just little technical issues like that. But again, this one doesn't apply to external boards. It's just that group. We did apply that 97 resolution, though, to the MUAPB and the BZA. And the last thing, I'm not going to go over this. We've just gone through the fun of KSA 12-16-128, which applies in, on its terms to any mayor appointment to a board, commission, advisory group, or other bodies subject to governing body approval. That's the language from the statute. You're familiar with this. As a reminder, this is not a uniform statute. We could charter out of it and provide a substitute provision for these, for this process. Okay, I think that was an error. So I'm going to turn it over to the manager. I just provided that background, just to let you know there are different boards. Some of the changes that you're talking, that you, if you agree on changes tonight, it could take an ordinance or a resolution, just depending upon the nature of the changes and application. So I'm going to take notes, and I guess, I guess, Ron, if you, would you like me to move through these slides for you?
Well, I need, I'm going to need somebody to advance the slides. It doesn't have to be you, but if, whatever's convenient for folks there, so apologize for that. Appreciate the background there, Katie, and for, for getting us started on this. You know, it's, if I could have the next slide. So one of the things, we've done quite a bit of research in looking into how different communities and cities appoint their board, advisory board process and, and the different items on the agenda. But invariably, almost unanimously, we found that typically the mayor, whether they're in a city manager form of government mayor or a directly elected mayor, is charged with making those recommendations for those, those board appointments. And so that, that hasn't necessarily changed. And I know there might be some discussion to, to have on whether or not you want to amend that process, but that's a, that's a process that we've adopted and, and had in, in my entire career with the city, as well as, uh, at, one that's very common across the, across the state. And I think really everywhere. So if we're going to change that, I think we do need to consider what potential impacts that may have on staff time. Obviously, the city's clerk's office spends a lot of time on this process to manage the different aspects. And we just need to, I think, keep in mind that aspect, as well as, you know, the transparency behind different aspects of, of that process. So, next slide, please. So I, as I said, the city clerk's office currently coordinates and manages the board appointment process. And Brenda, if you have a comment that you want to make and, and reiterate here, that's, please jump in there as well. Sorry, I can't see you raising your hand. So apologize for that. We certainly haven't rehearsed this aspect of things. But they do a, a great job of trying to keep this process moving as smoothly as possible. And, and you all are aware of that. You've all worked with them as mayors. You've all been mayors, so you know what kind of a process, and, and a lot of work that goes into it. But they receive and process those applications. Currently, you know, we have a program of Civics Plus that has one particular form, an interest form that represents all of our boards and, and commissions and, and different aspects that we appoint folks to. And, and so that's a submittal process that our folks manage. They then look at the applications and they verify the different eligibility of the applicants. And then they post those for the commissioners to be able to review, as well as, as, as online, the list of, I think that's true. Is that true, Brenda? Do we, is the community, is anybody able to see those applications?
No, Ron, they can't.
Or is it just the commissioners?
Just the commissioners.
Okay. So that's something that, it wasn't real clear from our investigatory process whether or not the public had access to those documents or not. Clearly, it would be an open record if somebody requested them. But I, you know, it varies about how much of that information is, is out there for the public to see. So the other thing is, is that, that they work with the board liaisons, especially when there's a vacancy, so that they can, that there's a resignation, so the process can start, notify the mayor of needing to, to fill the term. Sometimes those resignations are, you know, abrupt, and they, they leave immediately. Sometimes they give us some notice. Sometimes, you know, they're near, they're ending their term. And so the other process that's involved with is, um, that they, whether or not they want to serve again, so, and how they, they re-up. So, next slide, please. Again, they, you know, the clerk's notifies members when their term is expiring, whether or not to, want to be considered for reappointment. The clerk's office also works with staff liaisons to ensure a proper and timely orientation of new appointees. So that's an important role that the staff liaisons have. Next slide. You know, one of the things that you've given us some direction on is that you'd like to see us modify and enhance some of our interest forms, especially to kind of broaden the scope of the information of various applicants, especially with regard to some of our policy boards. So when I, when I speak to policy boards, I mean, things like the law board and the library board, boards that have some of that additional authority, that are, they're not really advisory boards to you. That, you know, they set budgets, they, they may be responsible for hiring, as well as establishing policy for the entity to oversee. The Board of Housing Commissioners would be another one that fits in that. And then also, some of the quasi-duce boards. Now, some of the, the bylaws and, and forms have different information on them, whether it's the planning board, or the boards that make up the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and the boards, the housing appeals boards, where you have different trades that need to be represented. So, you know, there are maybe some important information that we. So, you know, there are maybe some important information that we should be gathering. And I know you've heard from some of the public that would like to see more information relative to primarily the law board appointments. So one of the things that staff has been looking at, fortunately, we, as we've talked to other cities, there's, there's some that have been at this and been a little more technology savvy than we have been. And, and as I looked at some of the other organizations, a lot of the forms online are streamlined per individual board, so that you have that information, and, and you make it fairly easy for those individuals to, to be able to fill out those forms. And Brenda, we didn't talk about this in advance, but if you wanted to, or anybody else that's been involved, talk to the commissioners a little bit about some of the things we've been looking at, and, and some of the issues that we'd like to maybe try and solve with, if we can find a good piece of software that doesn't have a whole lot of other things that we have to have to go with it. Any thoughts there, Brenda?
Some of the items we were looking at for software was hoping to make it less manual, so manual for the city clerk's office, something that would be more automated. And I think we've, we have located one of those companies. Pretty impressed with it. And it would also update the city website, the members listening automatically without, without us having to update the website. It would also produce information regarding the board. That's already, you know, like, we already have out there on the website that details, details the board itself. All that would be produced by the system.
Yeah, yeah, just be, there'd be a lot of automation that would occur with this process. You know, we'd be, once in, from the life cycle of when a person submits an application to when it's reviewed by the mayor and the governing body, to when they, it gets approved, and then you come on a board, it'll track their term. It'll send reminders to that individual to, you know, that their term is expiring if they want to submit an interest form. All that stuff right now, we are tracking manually, we're sending those emails ourselves. It's a lot of time and a burden on the city clerk's office, so hopefully that's going to be quite a big efficiency.
I think it's excellent to automate it. I, I did, you know, provide a, a couple of weeks ago, a rough draft of, I just took one board. And that was a very rough draft, but, but trying to get across the idea to customize for each board, because I, I know, last time I was mayor, it was a real pain sometimes to figure out if people were qualified. And I think people that were putting in applications did not read all the stuff. And so, they applied for boards they weren't qualified for, which you had to then tell them they weren't. They're still on the list, and I think a customized form, you know, would prevent that. Especially with some of those where, you know, you're applying for a position, you have to have a certain qualification, like the airport board, you must be a pilot, you know, when that one's open. And, and that was the idea behind that. And I know what I provided wasn't perfect, but it's just a, a concept that hopefully we're going along those lines.
Yes, we're, I'm looking at the bylaws, trying to incorporate questions that might be helpful. You know, are you a resident of the city? That's not uniform throughout, throughout all the boards, if you have to live within the city limits. So, trying to address all those. Also, one thing that we don't address now is conflicts of interest. So, we're adding questions to the interest form for that. So, we're trying to, we will have a separate interest form for each board, and trying to ask more questions. And we also want to try to address a lot of the applications we receive. A person hasn't even looked at when, when the board meets. And so, they've applied, we've appointed them, we tell them when they're going to, you know, what time, the meeting time is, and they find out, well, I, I can't attend that. So, type of things like that, questions, trying to be more assertive on the front end and ask those type of questions on the interest form, is what we're trying to, trying to get at.
Yeah, I think that's, that's excellent. That's what I was hoping, we were, we were going in that direction. And then, and then again, you know, I wanted to have a part on there. It's almost like, you know, when, when we file for election, people say, well, why are you running for election? And, and people want us to say, and, and I'd like to see that, because some of the board applications that I looked at, you know, last year, I didn't have a clue why this person wanted to be on the board. It was just, you know, I want to be on the board, I'm interested.
And a lot of the cities we've looked at, some of them ask the applicant to attach a resume. So, we have, I think the program we looked at, it allows them to attach, you know, supporting documentation as well. So that's another option that the commission can decide if they want, as a requirement, so.
Yeah, I think that would be particularly helpful on some of those, like, are you a pilot? Are you an engineer? There, there's several boards where they have real specific skills. And so, that would, that would solve that issue. You could then verify, because otherwise, you just take, you have to take their word for it. You know, the guy says, well, I'm an architect, so therefore, I'm qualified. Well, how do I know you're really an architect? And, and, you know, and you don't have time to dig into that. So that would be useful on some of them.
Yes, and like the ABID, DBID. You have to be a member or work for, for a business in that district. We don't ask that question. I don't know that answer, so I have to look for, to finance to help provide you that information and confirm. And another one we, I have found when looking, is that, like, on the planning board or BZA, one of the questions that they ask, have you had an item before this board? Or do you regularly have an item before this board? So, questions like that, I found, so.
You know, as we, as we expand further into Potawatomi County, we also have a lot of interest from people who live in Potawatomi County. Their address says Manhattan, Kansas. And, and when they apply, we have to say, I'm sorry, you don't live in the city. And so, we need somehow a way to, to, so, one, you know, occasionally, one gets through. I just had a woman that applied, and I thought it was great, and I sent the message to the city staff, let's appoint her, only to hear back that she wasn't a city resident. But yet, she had, to me, she looked like she had made an application, and I didn't recognize her street. So they need to be screened for residency upon receipt, rather than so far down the road that I've already talked to her, and now I have to call her back and tell her, I'm sorry, you're not in the city. The other one that just is a frustration is the Blue Valley resident for the Bicycle Advisory Board. And it's just impossible practically to find someone. So I don't know if, maybe, I don't know what to do with that one, just don't have a suggestion. The, but I do appreciate the need. Filling these specific slots can sometimes be difficult. And, and, I had another item I was going to mention, what was it? Well, a, a resume would be great, and an explanation about why they want to serve on this board. Oh, I know what it was. Recently, two people, I think, filled out applications and, and submitted them for five or six different boards, and didn't qualify for any of them because the person isn't a city resident. Oh, but I own property in Manhattan, you know, type thing. So, there are those, I don't know if the software can check whether they're a city resident or not, I doubt it.
We usually go out to the GIS and confirm address. And another thing is, you know, like SSAB or Special Alcohol, they may not reside in Manhattan, but they have a business. So, you know, that's another.
But it seems to me, if they show up on the list, that, then that means they've passed. They've been screened by your staff, as though, I'd like to think it's that good.
We have done our, we have tried to do our due diligence upfront.
I know. Anyway, so, but the multiple applications, I agree that applying one by one, for one board at a time, would stop that, so, anyway.
Mayor, I just have a comment there, too.
Yes.
I think when we look at the application process, or quote-unquote resume, upload, or whatever it might be, to also keep it simplified, because these are, after all, volunteers. And there is not a job application, they're not getting paid for it. But at the same time, we want somebody who has, quote-unquote, the right motivation and skill set to serve on the board. And we want to get a whole lot of people that want to apply and serve on a board. So I think that it's extremely important just to have maybe three or four questions that they have to answer that are very pertinent to that particular board, as opposed to references or anything else that we might, you know, a, a regular job might ask for.
Is that possible, Brenda, or is this new software allow different questions for different boards? It does, okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be a limit on the amount of questions, so we can just tailor each interest form to, to the questions we want to ask.
I agree about, you know, resumes can get long. Certainly, you want it to be pertinent to the board they're applying for. But if somebody wanted to attach it, you know, I guess they could. But mostly, I would just like a paragraph saying what they've, how they're associated with, or interested in, in that, the business of that board.
Or maybe what they're in, or how they can, what they bring to the board, could bring to the board.
Yeah, I think the, the little straw draft, whatever, that I wrote, it had a couple of standard questions. Like Mark said, you know, what are your goals? Do you have conflict of interest? And then, and then there were two or three questions that would be tailored to that specific board only. Like, are you a pilot if you're applying for that? So, so I agree, we can't, we shouldn't be asking them for twenty, thirty questions. And I think, you know, if it's a link to a resume, it's like you can have on all of them, if you wish to include a resume, you know, go ahead, and on some, you may require it, like, provide documentation, you are a pilot, you know, for that particular one. And then people that want to put it on there can, if they don't want to, fine. But, you know, they might be disqualified if they don't put the certifications on there that we need for those specific ones.
And then we have boards, like the, one person has to be designated by Fort Riley to serve on the airport board, and another one has to be designated by the Health Department to serve on the bicycle and pedestrian board. So there are those other complications, too, yeah. Gee, this piece of software must be fantastic.
And the City University Fund is the other one that's confusing, because you have to have faculty people, and you have to have, and they got to be nominated by the Faculty Senate, and by, and, and those are always difficult to figure out. You know that.
Just a point, so, many of the complications of these boards are of our own making.
Yeah.
Not all of them, some of them, like, maybe the City University Fund is something that we agreed with K-State. But if we have specific requirements, if it's an ordinance or a resolution that we've adopted to create that board, and it's purely of our creation, and that, we're putting in requirements there that we're finding it difficult to meet. So, this isn't, this is outside the scope of the discussion tonight, but a bigger picture consideration for the commission is simplifying the boards more broadly. So that might be looking at the boards and eliminating or consolidating boards, or looking at the ones that are hardest for you to fill, and reducing the number of members, or reducing all the criteria so that you, it is easier to appoint. That's a bigger picture issue, and in order to do that, you'd have to look at every individual board. But that is, that is a way to minimize some of the staff work and some of the difficulty that our mayors have in making appointments, is to simplify the boards that we can simplify.
I agree, we did that with the Douglas Center last year, because the hangup was, you had to be a member of the ward district, and we had all these people applying, and it just didn't work. And that being a community rec center, it, it was just outdated. And it took a while, but the board had to change their, their policy and all that, so we got it fixed. So now it's easier to do that one, anyway.
So, we, will we have the opportunity? Are you going to be bringing all of the, the descriptions of all the boards to us, so we can talk to you about it? What is it that we need to do to make it to at least, at least?
We're looking for general input. So we're looking for general input on all of that, as well as just our, not only our process, but ultimately, you know, I think it would be important to revisit some of the boards. We want to have a process that I think we should engage some of the boards also, whether that's a survey or something like, like that, to gauge some, some input on different aspects of their functions, and, and how, how do they see as a, as a, one who's applied to be on a, a board, and that process they went through. So, some other food for thought, and, and this is my last slide, but before I kind of get to some of that for discussing any potential changes you want to make, you know, some of the research that I found, and it relates to Mayor Morse's comments about, and, and several of you commented about sometimes, you know, the qualifications to serve. For example, for, you know, you have to be a city resident, that sort of thing. So, this is from the city of Lawrence. Persons being appointed to an advisory board committee or commission should hold, should be a resident of the city or own a business within the city. Exceptions to this may be made from time to time, in which case, the reason for the appointment of someone who is not a resident of the city or own a business within the city should be so stated by the person making the appointment. A more simpler one was in, when it's in Olathe, which I thought was kind of interesting, because you could tell some of the ones that have had, struggled with maybe finding board members. Preferred candidates for appointment, notice they say preferred candidates for appointment, not mandatory candidates, should be residents of Olathe, or be otherwise connected to Olathe in terms of property ownership, business affairs, or by offering a unique and necessary expertise. Very, very plain and simple, and, and obviously gives you some flexibility in, in making that determination. So I thought those were somewhat interesting. Some other areas, as we reviewed some of those things, also in Olathe, commissioners receive a written notification with the application attached from all of the proposed appointments at least seven days prior to it being listed on an agenda. So, more time for all commissioners to see who's being appointed. And I get the impression that's the only time they see that application. I'm not sure that's true or not. Obviously, what we try to do, as soon as those applications come in, or the interest forms come in, I think we give commissioners a notice that there's a, a new applicant that's on your, on your list. Salina has an example where the, the city clerk's office distributes copies of the completed expressions of interest forms to commissioners, so they may offer written suggestions to the mayor on the appointments. And that happens when they come in. So, you, you don't necessarily have a situation that it's just right before they're being recommended for appointment, it's when they come in. So it, it, it has a little, maybe less politics associated with it. Pittsburgh makes a recommendation that persons listed for appointment are encouraged to attend the commission meeting that they're being considered, in case the commissioners have questions. And one of the other cities listed the telephone number of, for all the commissioners that, that could, could call. That gets kind of interesting. The other thing that was, seemed to be pretty prevalent, too, is that most of them had a time limit for how long a form could be on file. So, most of them purged them after a year, and then basically recontacted them if they want to, if they had to, if they want to continue to be considered, they weren't selected within that one-year period. If they wanted to continue to be considered, they had to file a new application. They couldn't just say, yeah, keep me on it, I don't want to change it. So, I thought that was, that was kind of interesting. So that's just a, a little food for thought from some of the other, the findings that, that we had from other entities. As we get into exploring potential other changes, clearly you all have made, given us discussion and input about kind of wanting to have more information on certain types of, of board members, and, and the, just the process of selecting boards to some of these issues. The law board kind of stands out in that process. And, and so, again, traditionally, it's been up to the, the mayor to, to make those recommendations. So, is there a way that would help facilitate that consideration without, you know, some type of confrontation? So is that some kind of a nomination process, where each commissioner nominates from the pool of applicants considerations to be given to the mayor? So the mayor at least knows how that, that certain candidates stand with, with some of those commissioners. Related to that, you know, one of the things that also I noticed with some of the other communities is, they have, they, they've aligned all of their, which, which is pro and con. It kind of gets back to evaluations of employees, and do you want to evaluate them on their anniversary date, or all of them at once at the end of the year? And so a lot of them have set times. So some of them twice a year where all the terms expire. And so they, they work on, on those aspect of things. But with, with some of these other more significant boards, it might be wise to have a process such that you start in October and you put a notice out for anybody wanting to serve on the law board to submit an application with all of the appropriate information for consideration. Go through that process again of commissioners submitting comments or nominations as it gets forward to, and then are there any follow-up questions? And commissioners could submit questions that they want those applicants to respond to. And then from that, those nominations could go to the mayor, and the mayor could make a recommendation at the first meeting in December. You know, specifically with this one, this particular board or, or, because it is so impactful from a, from a standpoint of policy and budget and different aspects like that. I think it's, one of the things that's kind of amplified the politics of it has been the change in our time period. So going from a spring selection of a mayor in April to a selection in November, which is, you, you now have mayors that are making recommendations on, on any of the boards that had an end-of-year expiration or thereabouts. So you have flexibility to decide when you're going to make your choices to serve on those boards. You don't have to be pushed by that ending deadline. But that, the, the mayor that's making that appointment now was the same mayor that would be there from April to April as it is from November to the end of December. So those are, those really haven't changed, it's just brought it more into attention because they're an outgoing mayor right away when they're recommending appointments for these new positions. So those are, those are just some, some thoughts about that, and we'd appreciate some feedback on what you think of some type of process like that. And then do you want to repeat that for any of the other policy boards or, or any of the quasi judicial boards of, of having some circumstance or some more detailed questions about that, I think would be good information to have. And again, just some of the things we've covered, there's a lot there. There's a lot to do with this and, and, you know, I don't think we're on any, we're not on a fast track necessarily to do all this. And how much do you want to involve the boards in this process for feedback? Those are some comments we'd appreciate some feedback on. And then, and then the whole issue of, you know, chartering out of the, of the provision of the findings, you know, clearly, most of the ones we reviewed had done that and folks are appointed and serve at the pleasure of the commission without any particular reason. So that's a, that's, that's a, that's some feedback we'd like on too. Obviously, there, there needs to be a super majority for that of consideration. And if there's something we haven't covered or thought of, please raise those as well.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start out probably with the most contentious item. That's kind of what I do. The, which has to do that, how we actually appoint people to the boards. The way that the whole process worked, I know a number of commissioners on this commission thought it worked, I know a lot of prior commissioners thought it worked, and I'm just going to kind of walk through it, was that the mayor made nominations and if, and when I was mayor, I had people vote against my nominations. I think all of us have been mayor and probably had someone vote against theirs at the particular time. But my understanding was that if we, if the commission voted down, down someone, then we took nominations from people on the commission, and if it got seconded, then we appointed them. I think part of the confusion is that's kind of how it happens with the law board because it's written up a little different, different way. And when we had our issue, when we did turn down some appointees back a few weeks, we actually attempted to do that, and Katie said we couldn't. And then the real kicker was subsequently the discovery and interpretation of this state statute, which is something we didn't know about at the time with the 45 days and the unfit, just complicated it even more at that standpoint. It's interesting how we have these discussions. It always seems like someone's trying to figure out what's the motive of the person arguing a certain way. So I'll just tell you my motive right off the bat is I'd like to do it the way I thought it was, which is I like the, the mayor being the one that does that initial nomination and probably 90-some percent are just going to fly through maybe with a dissent vote or two, and then there might be some points of contention on some. And I'd like to propose doing it the way that I thought it was, which is if we do turn one of those down, then it's opened up for a commissioner to make a nomination. Now, we've got the state statute, and if we say the mayor's the one doing it, it automatically applies. So we're stuck unless we do a charter ordinance to get out of that. So to me, that's one of the questions is do we have four votes to do that? If people, even if they don't agree with me on the rest of it, do we want to charter and get out of that thing? I think no one likes having to do this unfit stuff with someone that we're going to not approve. Now, the, if we do that, Katie will have to make sure this is correct, but I think it's rather simple that we just then need to change our ordinances to say that the mayor will be able to nominate. If it is turned down, it goes to the governing body or some language to make it so someone else can nominate and then we can proceed. If we don't do the charter ordinance and we still want to have that type of process, the only way I could see doing it was to, would be to change the appointments by the board to be the governing body and not the mayor, but kind of like how we elect the mayor, that's, that's not done because it's an ordinance or a state statute or anything else. We follow a tradition and put people in by the top vote getter and the next vote getter as those mayors. So in essence, while we wouldn't have it formally, that the mayor would, would do it, we'd kind of just default and let that nomination go, go first. I think the best way is to do a charter ordinance and then write it up exactly how we want to do it, but we would need, we'd need four votes in order to do the charter ordinance. So anyway, that's what I'm throwing out to kind of debate to see what people think.
Well, I think we, we have to get out of that. We, we got to be able to get to the point where if the, if the majority of the commission doesn't want to approve an appointment, we don't want to approve the appointment, end of story. We don't have to go through this brain damage of saying they're unfit and all that other stuff because that's, that's, it's an awful process. I don't know who ever came up with that. So if, if we can, I'm interested in chartering out of that madness because that is just stupid. I, I don't, I don't think we need to do a bunch of wholesale changes. And God bless you, John, I appreciate your, your wanting to try to get, if the mayor, if you don't like the mayor's person, I think give the mayor a second chance to appoint somebody different. I, I think it's, at some point, yeah, at some point, there'll be different people who are mayors, and there'll be different 3-2 combinations of, of people. And I don't want to upset a whole bunch of processes. And especially don't want to upset a whole bunch of processes on the very occasional, very rare situation where something, we don't want to approve somebody for some reason. So I'm all in favor of getting out of that state statute that, that I talked about. I'm not quite ready to go to John's place where we, the commission picks somebody off the list and bypasses the mayor. I just think, yeah, we could give the mayor some input and then maybe they'll take the mayor, maybe I would take that input and, and go with what the majority of the commission wanted. But I think we can do some of that stuff if we can, if either it's brought to our attention or I guess we have to be reminded, okay, there's some appointments coming up and there's somebody I really want that's on the list. We need to maybe express that to the mayor if, if you're not the mayor, and, and maybe they would take that into consideration. Maybe they won't. But I don't think we need to make, you know, wholesale changes, and I'm not quite ready to go that far. But I am, I insist on getting out of this, this state thing. That is just no way to, to, to solve that, just wanting to simply vote somebody down.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I was, yeah, I think I agree. I, that we shouldn't have to say somebody's unfit or unqualified. I mean, it's always good to have a rationale and a reason for why you are not, why you are opposed to an appointment, and I think we can articulate that better than saying that they're unqualified or unfit, especially when we don't have people running to their laptops trying to be on boards. We struggle with getting people to volunteer to be on our boards. I think all of us have faced, and, you know, we've called our friends, tapped on people's shoulders to see if they'd be interested on a board. The answer is, yeah, I'm interested, but I don't have time. And we know how, how hard it is for even people that want to serve to give up some of their own lifetime to be on some of these boards. And no board is just a, a one hour a month or two hours a week. We just never know when all of these meetings are going to happen, but special meetings and such. So I don't want to do that to our community. I do respect the role of the mayor. All of us have been mayors, and when we are mayors again, I think we respect what they, whom they choose to serve on these boards because we know how difficult it is. And we also trust that previous mayors have put, made their appointments, a current mayor will make their appointments, and somehow that, that board will be balanced. So it's not tipping the scale in any way. And those board members oftentimes read their materials, get educated on the topics they have to vote on, and come to a consensus on their own. So we haven't had those types of struggles or conflicts on our boards, and I don't think that's something we should try to change how the board selection is done, just how you oppose a recommendation should probably come, you know, rationale. Again, you don't have to give a rationale, you can just say, I, I vote no. And I think in some cases, that would probably be just fine. I do not like the terms unqualified and unfit. I just don't see any of our community members like that.
Well, there's two ways we can do it. I, I just want it changed so that, you know, I have no problem, the mayor can make recommendations, but we ought to be able to say no if we disagree. And if three say no, then the person's not on the board. And we could accomplish that by changing the wording of every one of these board policies, or we can do it by chartering out of that ancient Kansas ordinance. And then that'll work. And then as far as I'm concerned, you know, the mayor can make recommendations. I think 90% of the time, it's not going to be a problem. But if it is, you know, three commissioners ought to be able to say no, and then make a recommendation on who they want on there. And then I can go along with Mark's thing, and the mayor can reconsider that and then put forth another name. And, and if the three people that voted no don't like the new name, they can vote no again. But this idea of having a resolution, calling people unfit, that's insanity, but it was the only way we could do it. So we were forced to do it that way. But, but, but I'm just focusing on the bottom line, let's do one of these two. And as John asked, you know, probably the quickest and easiest way to save staff time would be to charter out of this. If we don't charter out of it, then I'm in favor of then we'll do this the hard way too, which is we have to change every one of the, every one of the board policies. You know, I think John, he would vote to charter out of it. I will vote to charter out of it. What we need is an opinion from the other three commissioners.
Mark has already said, Yusha has already said, I'm waiting until all of the commissioners. As mayor, I'll wait till the end.
Well, if that's correct, I wasn't sure, but that would be four, so it seems like we could do this the easy way by simply having that on the next agenda and move on.
Well, I would just say, in my own defense, I was following the procedures that the city has and that we all said, we will abide by the procedures of the city. So at, you know, whatever is under, water under the bridge. I want to call our citizens unfit and unqualified when they have been serving a term, a three-year term already. That is outrageous, and it shouldn't happen. The, so I would agree to charter out of that. And if an appointment is turned down, I can agree that the mayor appoints somebody else. And whether it's, you get twice, like Mark said, or you just keep pitching them, I don't know. I only have about six months left. Mark, then it's yours. Yippee. And I, 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 anyway, the, what else do I need to speak to? It's not a matter of choices. I don't check the political party of anybody I'm appointing. I look for people who have satisfactorily served and, and they've done a good job, the airport board, whatever. And so it's only when there's a blip and the commissioners suddenly get a burr under their saddle that something gets upended, I guess. So what else do I need to speak to that we have been talking about?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any, I mean, some of these will involve some of the changes to our, some of those individual board policies as we work on overhauling. But I think you've given us enough information based on some of the information that we've provided that we can craft, I mean, a resolution for board appointments. Again, this is the, a lot of the, the things that have not been addressed over the years. And so that would be the next stage is to kind of bring you a draft policy and then identify, you can give us some additional, additional feedback on where we go from there. But I do appreciate the feedback on the charter ordinance, and I think we can start that process for that chartering out of the, of the statute that we've been talking about.
What is the timeline you're looking for, for revising the process? I mean, I'm, I'm looking for it to really happen this time, so two months, three months? What are we looking at for revising this new software and is it? That's my question.
So I don't know, I haven't had a full discussion with, with my staff on it, but I will certainly answer that, do my best to answer that for you at the, at your, potentially your final briefing session.
Okay. By the time I'm ending my mayor here. Okay.
Well, the final official briefing session next, in two weeks. I hope to have that timeline laid out for you.
Okay.
And certainly give you something that you can respond to and, and have a draft. I don't think we could probably have a draft policy, but I'll certainly lay that timeline out. And as you think about some of the other aspects that we've talked about, any feedback you have for us that you could give us about, you know, is one year enough to be on the, on the list for consideration and?
Sure. I think that's a reasonable.
Appreciate the idea of having some broadened applications, especially for some of the advisory boards or the policy boards, and information for expertise. Did you like that idea about the law board nomination process? Or, you know, just some feedback on some of those aspects? And is it just the law board or is it some of the other board?
In my history, we have had no input into the descriptions of the boards and who need, who should serve on, what categories. I have not had any input. So it's his, I think it's just historic. We've inherited and, and, you know, and the staff, you know, works with it and makes it happen. So it's not that we made any decision to put somebody from Potawatomi County on a board or not, it just, it's, we've inherited it. And so I'm happy to have this process updated. Yusha, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I was going to say, Ron, I didn't know if you wanted any answers to that. I think one year is good for forms. I think people often think, and I know I do, that if, if a board member's already been selected, then mine is outdated and done. And sometimes we keep them for three years and those people don't even realize their still, application is still there. So I think making it clear that their application will be online or available for one year, even if the board appointments are made that. available for one year, even if the board appointments are made that year, their board application will be eligible for one year from the date they apply till that date of that end date. And as far as law board is concerned, the Coalition of Equal Justice, Equality and Justice, I think that's the group, they've presented to us a few times about law board appointments. I think when we start having that discussion about law board appointments, I think that is something to review and maybe even discuss it with City, County, Riley County, because they were also presented something similar. If, if there's going to be an application process to law board, the, I, I think the county has adopted some kind of format. Maybe it should be good, it would be good to be a little more consistent in what that application looks like. Just, just because they, that group has presented to both government agencies. And I think it, it would be very respectful of us to look at it and give them feedback and also see if maybe we want to put in some of their recommendations into how we appoint our law board members. And that was something the community had a, a lot of interest in, in addition to just our commissioners.
Yeah, Ron, you asked two questions. I wanted to give you feedback. I like that Olathe thing because the, the idea of a business owner could be on a board. And if, you know, if we can't find a resident or a business owner, then that third category would, would, would work. And I think that would solve the problem on, on some of those. Like I think that bicycle board position's been vacant for two years. We could, we never could find anybody because, because we were constrained. So, so that one, I think, is a good improvement. I would go for two years of leaving the applications there simply because, you know, one year is not long enough because there may not be an opening. So I could go with two. That might save some paperwork. But after two, they should be purged. Because when I looked at that list last, there's some really old applications on there. And, so we need to get rid of those. But I think those two things would be very good to do.
I think we also need to, to have some kind of a policy about when someone's appointed and doesn't show up at the board meetings for a year or however long. Because I just had one where the person, or actually two, where the person didn't attend ever in the course of a year. And finally, I got in touch with one person and asked him, would you please just resign? And because their life circumstances can change. So we need a way to just, because it doesn't help our boards when there's a perpetual vacancy.
I think that's, that's already in there where it says if they don't show up a certain number of times.
I know, but we don't do it. We have never kicked anybody off of a board for not a certain day.
But we can. The, the procedure's there. And I agree with you. If they're not showing up, they need to, they need to go.
Somehow.
I agree with Gwen.
The two years is fine. We just need a, a process.
Two.
Okay. Have we talked this today?
All right. Well, I appreciate the feedback. We'll appreciate the feedback on both items tonight. We'll keep moving forward. So thank you very much for your time and input.
So do we need a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?